How much square footage are you looking for and where would you prefer it?
Well, in terms of square footage, we would just love like a small office so that we can have a couple of desks and maybe an area where we can have group meetings. Somewhere in the San Mateo, city of San Mateo area. Right now Pastor Bussey of St. James has been kind enough to give us a small corner where we have a desk and some file cabinets. But really we'd like just, you know, nine by 11 room with enough for two desks and, you know, some file cabinets and a, you know, printer and then maybe access to a conference room where we can have trainings and meetings, et cetera.
Got it.
Right now, we do have monthly meetings. Mills has been generous enough to let us hold our monthly meetings in the Henderson Auditorium at Mills right now, but we definitely would like to have some permanent space. So, thank you for asking.
I keep my eyes open.
Thank you.
So, I want to say thank you so much for all of the work that you do. The Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council, I've been proud to partner with since 2013 when I was on the Peninsula Healthcare District Board and we were actually sponsoring, provided grant money to the Soul Stroll, which is a fantastic event. This year it's going to be held, I'm just looking at...
May 16.
May 16 from 9 to 1 out at Coyote Point. That's always a fantastic event, so I would invite everyone to that, but also check out all of the events at B A C H A C dot org. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you so much for your time.
Madam Clerk, could I ask you to call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Pappen?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Goldsos?
Here. At this time, I'm going to move to ceremonial items. We have one ceremonial item tonight, and that is our competition with Rethink Waste. We have an honoree here. Nicholas Tagg, can I get you to stand up, please, sir? I have here a very special certificate of recognition that hereby is presented to Nicholas Tagg. You are from George Hall Elementary School for your award-winning entry into Rethink Waste poster contest. Use the four Rs. And this is presented on behalf of the San Mateo City Council today, January 6, 2020, by me, Joe Goldsos, the mayor. Thank you so much. Thank you.
It's an honor to be here tonight. My name is Rio Tagg and I'm a 4th grader at George Hall Elementary School. I am 10 years old and I live in San Mateo. It's important to me that we help the environment by using the four Rs: reuse, reduce, recycle, and rot. Let's all do our part to protect nature. Thank you.
And if I could ask Emmy Hashizumi to come forward and... From Rethink Waste, you are the education manager, is that right?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. You got to do the fun part and present the award, but we are very excited to recognize Nicholas. We had over 100 different submittals this year, so that's probably the most I think we've had since I've been here. So, it's very, very difficult to pick the winners, but we really liked the way that Nicholas had his four quadrants and the four different ways that you can reduce, reuse, recycle, and rot. So, great job, Nicholas. We look forward to seeing what you do next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, could you read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed into the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number 2, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number 3, City Council Member Service Travel Expense Approval. Item number 4, Employee and Labor Relations Negotiations and Consultant Agreement. Item number 5, San Ynez Apartments Refinance Subordination Agreement. Item number 6, Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Application. Item number 7, Transportation Development Act, Article 3 Grant Acceptance. Item number 8, Underground Flow Equalization System Easement Acquisition. Item number 9, Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act Loan Application. Item number 10, Columbia Crystal Springs Storm Drain Improvements Amendment. And item number 11, 2018-19 Community Development Block Grant Street Rehabilitation Project Bid Rejection.
Thank you so much. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an agenda item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, any member of the public who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I have no speakers.
Seeing none, is there a motion? Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
One second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent calendar passes unanimously. At this time, we're going to move on to the public comment period of the meeting. Public comment is a special period of time. We're going to dedicate the next 15 minutes to public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any item not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up, and we may decide to put it on a future agenda based on the comments. Public comment is limited to the next 15 minutes. However, we can make an opportunity later on in the agenda after our other items. Can I get a show of hands for people who would like to make public comment at this
I have three speaker's lips, Mayor.
I see more speakers out there. It looked like about seven people. I'm going to ask that we do two minutes per speaker so that we can get everyone in at this time. So, we'll go through the next seven speakers and then we'll get to our regular agenda.
Okay. The first speaker is Melanie Lee, followed by Victoria Moy, and then Dr. Bonnie Halpern-Felscher. And if I've called your name, please line up over here against the wall so we can move very quickly up to the lectern where you can have the microphone. So, first up is Melanie Lee.
As always, you don't need to use the full two minutes, but please feel free to share all of your ideas. Thank you so much.
I'll just begin. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, City Staff, and members of the public. My name is Melanie Lay. I live and work in San Mateo, and I'm a volunteer with VOCA. VOCA is an independent, nonpartisan organization that surveys San Mateo residents with the goal of giving them, everybody, a voice in local government. This past week, VOCA asked San Mateo residents to identify their number-one priority for you, City Council, to address in 2020. Nine options were given, along with other. Options were presented in a random order to each VOCA user in order to not bias one option over another. In total, 217 San Mateo residents responded to the poll. The top-rated priority was "Build More Housing" with 31% of votes. This was followed by "Climate Change and the Environment," 18%, "Traffic and Parking" with 14%, and "Slow Down Development" with 12%. I have provided printouts with the full result of this poll for each member of City Council and the city manager. In addition to selecting a number-one priority, VOCA polls also allow respondents to leave comments explaining their vote, and this week, 52 people left comments. These comments can also be upvoted by other users. I will now read some of the top comments from this week. Supporting the priority "Building More Housing." Quote, "We've added nearly 20,000 jobs in the last 10 years, but only about 2,000 homes. We need to prioritize building more housing so our workforce and children can live here." Supporting the priority "Climate Change and Environment." Quote, "With the new data suggesting four feet of sea level rise by the end of the century, our city's future is at dire risk. We have invested virtually zero real dollars. All we do is talk and write plans." Supporting the priority "Traffic and Parking." Quote, "Traffic, this is the number-one thing that makes living here miserable. It is impossible to get anywhere in a reasonable amount of time." Finally, supporting the priority "Slow Down Development." Quote, "No more offices until we address the affordable housing imbalance." Thanks for the opportunity to share. For anybody in the public who is interested, VOCA is free and open to anyone who would like to participate. Sign up just takes one minute at the website, V O C A dot...
Thank you so much, and we got your hand out.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Next speaker is Victoria Moy, followed by Dr. Bonnie Halpern-Felscher.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Victoria Moy, and I'm a resident of San Mateo, as well as a volunteer of Moms' Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. The city of San Mateo has 478 mom volunteers. We are a nonpartisan grassroots organization made up of both non-gun owners and gun owners, and our mission is to reduce gun violence and improve gun safety for everyone. Moms is certain that the Second Amendment can be respected while also better protecting the people through common sense gun legislation. We would like this council to add an ordinance to the municipal code which mandates that all firearms in the home be safely locked in a secure device. One small child dies almost every day in this country from finding a gun in their own home or a relative's home or while playing at a friend's house. Two older children, particularly teens, die every day in this country by suicide from an unsecured firearm they obtained from their home or another family member's home. Research shows that keeping guns securely stored does not hinder self-protection. A gun can be accessed within seconds, but it does prevent unintentional deaths of children and teen suicides by as much as 85%, depending on the type of storage. Research also shows that 75% of school mass shootings are done by current or former students. 80% of the time is done with an unsecured firearm obtained from their own home or a relative's or a friend's home. Finally, storing firearms in a securely locked container also keeps guns from being easily stolen in a home robbery. Some of the cities and towns in California that have already adopted a safe storage ordinance include Burlingame, Redwood City, Foster City, San Carlos, Portola Valley, Sunnyvale, Saratoga, San Jose, Morgan Hill, Santa Cruz, San Francisco, Arinda, Maraga, Belvedere, Tiburon, Berkeley, Oakland, Los Angeles, San Diego, and Palm Springs. Most towns that don't have a safe storage ordinance are in the process of discussing adoption. We hope San Mateo can also adopt a safe storage ordinance and are happy to help provide you with any information you may need. On behalf of Moms' Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comments. If I could ask the city attorney, I know that we cannot take any action tonight, but could the city council at this time ask staff to bring it back for a study session?
Yes.
Would a majority of the council like to bring that back for a study session? I see unanimous heads nodding, so we will bring that back for a study session. Thank you so much for your comments. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Dr. Bonnie Halpern-Felscher, followed by Tricia Barr, and then Kaiko Smith.
Can we swap, please?
Sure.
Just say your name when you go up there. Okay. Hi, I'm Tricia Barr, and I'm a parent with kids in 5th, 8th, and 11th grade. I'm a member advocate of the 17th District PTA, which represents 18,000 members in the county of San Mateo. Youth e-cigarette use in the United States has skyrocketed to what U.S. Surgeon General and the FDA have called epidemic levels. It's a public health crisis, and it is getting worse. We're seeing the same trends here locally in San Mateo County. According to the California Student Tobacco Survey between, for the 2018 results, had that in California, the current e-cigarette use for high school students was 10.9%. Within San Mateo County, it was almost double that, at 20.8%. And then this past November, the National Tobacco Student Survey results showed that 27.5% of high school students are currently using e-cigarettes. We're lucky that within our county, the Board of Supervisors has laid the groundwork with some ordinances that can provide a model for San Mateo. There's, the city has already adopted a tobacco retailer permit license, but in addition, what the county has adopted is a license to prohibit the sale and distribution of e-cigarettes, and the county also has a license to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products, as well as prohibiting the sale of all tobacco products in pharmacies. These ordinances only currently apply to unincorporated San Mateo County, so each city needs to adopt the ordinance in order for it to cover that city. Other local cities are taking action. Menlo Park adopted both ordinances, and those go into effect on December, or on January 17th. San Carlos banned flavored tobacco. Burlingame banned flavored tobacco. Belmont and East Palo Alto have asked their, the city councils have directed their staff to bring back draft ordinances. Please consider this for San Mateo.
Thank you for your comments.
If I had any other time, I'd seed that over to Dr. Bonnie.
Thank you.
And next, I have Dr. Bonnie. Kaiko instead?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Kaiko Smith. I am a representative of 17th District. We are subsidiary of National and California State PTA, and I serve as a vice president of advocacy and community concerns. I support Tricia Barr and Dr. Bonnie that we are speaking on behalf, so I choose to yield my time to give to Dr. Bonnie to be able to articulate, although we're going to be saying the same things.
Thank you so much. Dr. Bonnie?
Thank you. Now, I'm really nervous. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I am Dr. Bonnie Halpern-Felscher. I'm a professor in pediatrics in adolescent medicine at Stanford University, but more importantly, I am a resident in San Mateo, as well as a parent of two young adults, one of whom is 19 and was at the very heart of when this e-cigarette epidemic started. I'm a developmental psychologist with additional training in adolescent-young adult health. I'm also the founder and executive director of a nationally-recognized tobacco prevention program, an online free counseling program for adolescents to help prevent and stop e-cigarette use. I also have over 25 years of experience researching tobacco use, but I've never, ever seen the issue that we're in right now with electronic cigarettes, ever in the course of my work. I'm here to encourage you, City Council, to take further measures to restrict youth access to e-cigarettes, including adopting those county ordinances that Tricia mentioned, including banning flavored tobacco in e-cigarettes and banning all flavored and all tobacco products being sold in pharmacies. Despite our hopes and early promises, the federal government and the FDA not banning e-cigarettes or flavors or further restricting access, it's therefore imperative that we take the action now at the city level. There are four key issues that are going on, particularly flavors hook kids, flavors mask tobacco-related risks, flavors in e-cigarettes in general do not help adults quit despite thoughts that they do, they don't help them quit smoking, and youth continue to access tobacco from retail shops. As you're likely aware, the most common form of tobacco use among youth is e-cigarettes, as Tricia just said. Alarmingly, there are over 7,000 flavors available for e-cigarettes and numerous flavors in other tobacco products, flavors that attract young and new users. We have flavors like Honeydoo, Unicorn Poop, Sugar Booger. These, and I'm sorry for saying that in council, but these flavors are not for adults. These are youth flavors. They are also flavors such as mint and menthol, and despite evident, excuse me, despite thinking, there is no evidence that those flavors are for adults. Those are kid flavors. My research shows it, very well-published research across the country shows, all of these flavors are attracting youth. And what happens is, is these flavors attract the harsh taste from tobacco and encourage youth, and most kids would say, "I would not be using these products if there was no flavor in them." And they continue to use them because of those flavors. More importantly, there's almost two packs of nicotine worth, two packs of cigarettes worth of nicotine in a Juul pod right now, the most common used product amongst youth. So, you're going to hear arguments that adults need the flavors to quit, but that's not true. What we're really seeing is that adults are switching. They're switching from cigarette smoking to e-cigarettes. They are not quitting. They are not using e-cigarettes to quit. We do have proven methods for adults to quit smoking. We have nicotine replacement therapies. We have gum. We have patches. We have all kinds of things to help adults quit. We do not need e-cigarettes to help them quit. There's also more evidence that what's happening is, is that kids are using these e-cigarettes and becoming addicted. I get phone calls daily in my lab from parents, from youth, from the press, from healthcare providers, saying, "What are we going to do about these kids?" So, finally, just quickly to talk about access. Youth are easily accessing these e-cigarettes and other tobacco products from retail and vape shops and in pharmacies, including those in San Mateo. As I said, I'm a resident here. I actually do some of my research here. I've had participants in my studies who go to the high schools here say, "Yeah, the store, the vaping shop on El Camino didn't matter if I was 17 or 19. The legal age is 21 in the state of California. I'm able to purchase these products very easily." So, they're not IDing youth on a regular basis. We need better regulation and enforcement of these shops, and we have to have stricter retail licensing and enforcement. So, the evidence is really clear. The extraordinarily high levels of nicotine get kids addicted. Flavors, including the fruit, candy, mint, and menthol, attract and keep kids addicted to tobacco. Adults don't need flavored e-cigarettes to quit smoking. Instead, they're switching, and we need to restrict youth access to all tobacco products. I urge you, as City Council members, to put kids first. I urge you to match those county ordinances, ban flavors, pass other regulations that are really critical to help our kids, and we encourage you to do a study session on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bonnie. Any further public comment?
Other speakers?
Okay. With regards to that last item, I know we had several speakers talking about e-cigarettes. It's probably something that's going to come up at our blue sky priority session. Is this something that we want to bring back for a study session as well?
Yes, please.
I'm just a little concerned because I know that at the federal level, there's going to be some legislation, and I'm worried about burning up city resources right now. Totally in favor of doing it. I just worry, what is our ability to do it at this moment in time? So, that's kind of where I am on it. If the group wants to do it...
I'm not asking that we vote on it, but do we want to hear on what our options are during a study session, see what the other rest of the cities are doing in the county?
Usually, we do it by blue sky, but...
Okay. We'll do both of those. Does that work? Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to move on to agenda item number 12. This is a public hearing on St. Matthew's Episcopal Day School, the tax-exempt financing. I'm going to turn it over. We have a presentation from Rich Lee, but first, I'm going to turn it over to my counsel, my colleague, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. My son actually goes to St. Matthew's Episcopal, and since the outcome of this hearing could potentially affect the amount of tuition that the school charges its parents, I have decided to recuse myself of this hearing, so...
Don't go far. This isn't going to take long. Welcome, Finance Director Lee. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor Goldsos, and members of the council. Rich Lee, Finance Director. The item before you this evening, as noted, is tax-exempt financing for St. Matthew's Episcopal, Episcopal Day School. Just a brief background on the school. It was founded in 1953, has nearly 300 students, and as you can see, there are a number of infographics available on their website. This may sound familiar. Recently, in 2013, they did go through the city through the CEDA. That's the Financing Authority for $12 billion in tax-exempt financing. This poses no additional debt obligation to the city, no exposure at all. There are required actions for this evening. First is to conduct the public hearing. Second is for the city to be an associate member of CEDA, and that was accomplished in 2013, and so that's already taken care of. All that's needed from the council is adoption of the resolution to approve their refinancing. And with that, I welcome any questions.
Great. Councilmember Pappen, I almost said Mayor Pappen. Once a mayor, always a mayor. Without any questions, I'm going to turn it over. Is there any public comment on this item?
No speaker slips.
Any public comment, going once, twice? I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for comments. We have a motion. We have a motion. And a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 4 to 0.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Rodriguez will be back any second. With that, we're going to move on to our next agenda item as soon as Councilmember Rodriguez is here. Item 13 is North Central, North San Mateo Drive Sustainable Street Project. Easy for me to say. Appropriation and agreement. I believe we have a presentation from Kathy Sammet. Hi, Kathy.
Hi.
Welcome back.
This evening, we're asking... This evening, we're asking the council to award a construction contract for the North San Mateo Drive Sustainable Streets Improvement Project, and we'd just like to briefly highlight the benefits of the project. Key objectives of the project are to accommodate multimodal transportation with specific emphasis on improving bicycle and pedestrian access. Project features include bike lanes, curb extensions, improved crosswalk delineation, and pedestrian signal enhancements. The design also incorporates green infrastructure features to treat stormwater runoff, and this will mark our second major project using these sustainable methods since the city's green infrastructure plan was unanimously approved by council in September. The project is located on North San Mateo Drive between Peninsula Avenue and Baldwin, and this will help improve the bicycle corridor, creating, connecting these major transit hubs between the San Mateo and Burlingame Caltrain stations. The project improvements include new signalized intersection at Bellevue and a signal upgrade at Poplar Avenue. These are shown on the map in the red icons, and these will include pedestrian countdown signals, curb extensions or bulldogs, and high-visibility crosswalks. There will be a signal interconnect system installed from Bellevue to Tilton to help improve traffic operations, and there will be additional pedestrian improvements along the corridor indicated by the blue dots, which include curb extensions, improved ADA curb ramps, and refreshed crosswalks. There will be six mid-block bioretention areas installed to provide stormwater treatment, and those will be at the locations shown in green. And approximately 20 on-street parking spaces will be removed to accommodate these installations of bioretention. Otherwise, all the other on-street parking within the project limits will remain as-is. The project will reconfigure the roadways and reconfigure the travel lanes to accommodate improved bicycle facilities. Right now, the existing lane configurations within the different limits are shown on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, what we're proposing is that the area from Peninsula to Catalpa will be improved to provide a dedicated bike lane in both directions. This will provide about one mile of Class 2 bike lane in both directions, and the section from Catalpa to Baldwin will remain essentially as-is, which is considered a Class 3 bike route. The benefit will also include operational and safety improvements for left-turn vehicle This project is consistent with the visions for our community outlined in various master planning efforts and represents a complete streets approach to project design. Construction consideration, oh, excuse me, public support, that there was significant public engagement through the commissions, the council, and the neighborhood associations from 2016 through 2019, so we... And the construction impacts are going to be typical. They will include some lane closures, some temporary parking restrictions, and there will be limited temporary downtime for the signals in order to install the new signals and do the cutovers. After the award of the construction contract this evening, we anticipate the preparatory work for construction to begin in February. That will include the procurement of the signal poles and the equipment as the first order of work, and then we'll begin physical field construction later in the spring of 2020 and anticipate completion of the project by the end of 2020. And we'd like to thank the community, the commissioners, and the council for engaging and supporting this multi-benefit project to enhance transportation options and safety and the environment. And that concludes our presentation, and thank you for your time.
Kathy, thank you so much for the presentation. Any questions from the council? Diane?
No questions. I can comment, but no questions.
Okay. Questions?
No questions?
No. No questions. Any questions for interim chief Nor... Any questions for Interim Chief Norris? He's, he happens to be here as well. No questions for Interim Chief Norris. Public comment?
We have one speaker card for Adam Lorraine.
Come on up, Adam.
Good evening, city council, staff. Happy New Year. I just wanted to come and give my support for this project. I think it's a great example of what the city is going to need to do to fulfill the vision of the Climate Action Plan that you just reviewed recently. This is, as Ms. Zammatt mentioned, a multi-benefit project, so it's huge. I feel like it's win-win-win. You make it safer for people to ride their bikes and walk in this area. This is a great area. It goes from Burlingame straight into, you know, our downtown area. I currently ride my bike there, but I know why others might not choose to do that at the moment. So the opportunity, you know, that's what is being discussed when we look at updating the Bicycle Master Plan, is focusing on making it simpler, easier, more convenient, better for those who are not necessarily riding their bikes now to do so. So if we can do that, we can get people out of their cars, and getting a little more exercise, and enjoying our great city in a safer way. So I urge you to please go ahead and pass this. Thank you.
Adam, thank you so much for your comments, and Happy New Year to you as well. Any, any meeting where you make public comment is a great meeting. Thank you, Adam. I'll bring it back to the council. I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for any final comments. Diane?
Well, I just wanted to say, I know when we went on our bicycle tour with Public Works, and Councilmember Rodriguez was there with his son, it was one of the more treacherous areas, and I know Mayor Golds knows this area very well, so I'm absolutely delighted it's going forward.
I am also thrilled. We've seen this presentation come through the Neighborhood Association twice now, and have been so eager to see it move forward with funding, so I'm thrilled.
Eric?
You know, everybody talks about how do we make our streets safer? How do we make it safer for bicyclists? And we talk about all these plans, and we have all these great things, but this is, I see it as, is like that great first step that's going to be tangible, so people can see what it looks like to be able to ride your bike without fearing for your life, and perhaps some, some kids can write on it, too. I think it's a great thing. I appreciate all of staff's hard work, and all of the commissions and public input that was put into this. Thank you.
Thank you. So I was a member of the Public Works Commission, I think from 2010 through 2016, and during that time, we authored, the city of San Mateo authored, the Bicycle Master Plan, the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, the Complete Streets Plan, and the Green Streets Plan. So this is those plans coming to fruition in a really kind of a grand way, on this particular stretch, which, if you're riding a bike, or if you're pedestrian, for years it's been kind of dangerous, because the speed limit through there is, I believe, 35 miles per hour, and it's really scary for people on a bike through there. The lanes are narrow. This will be great improvement. Cars will be able to get through just fine, but the other uses that we've been looking to encourage, those other modes of transportation, that enable people to cut greenhouse gas emissions, get some exercise, be healthier, and yet get things done, is coming about finally, and it's been a long time. This is part of our Transportation Oriented Development Plan. It includes measures, Transportation, TMA, Transportation, why am I blanking on that? Anyway, it has to do with managing how we transport ourselves around the city, so thank you very much. I approve.
Thanks, Rick. The only thing that I would add is, we have adopted Vision Zero. Not Vision, a few, not a Vision, a couple, but no serious injury, no death. Even one is too many. And so I think this is our commitment to that, and more projects like this will hopefully keep our pedestrians and our bicyclists safe. With that, do we need a motion on this item? So do I have a motion?
I'll move to adopt it.
With motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously, five to zero. Thank you very much. And our final presentation item, 14. This is New Business Public Employee Pension Reform Act, 180-day waiting period waiver request, and I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Drew.
Yes, thank you, and good evening. The item before you is a waiver request for the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, 180-day waiting period. So the Public Employee Pension Reform Act requires that a retiree wait 180 days before they are able to come back and work for a public entity. However, it does also allow for the council to waive that in certain circumstances. We've had a significant number of retirements recently. Over the past two months of the calendar year, we had 18 folks that retired. We have 19 recruitments underway, but we were unable to get three pretty key positions hired prior to the incumbent leaving. So as a result, we're requesting a waiver for those three employees with temporary assignments that will end no later than March 31st of 2020, and it will allow for knowledge transfer and continuity of operations for the city attorney's office, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
The state strongly discourages this, right?
Yes.
And we, as a city, and as a council, we don't like to do this very often, right?
No, I don't like to do it either.
In your opinion, are these three important waivers in order to keep our operations going?
Yes, these were, these requests were not taken lightly. And as I said, with 18 people going, we just simply weren't able to get everyone through the pipeline. Ideally, we like to get the positions identified early, and have that succession planning in place to make sure this doesn't happen. I think this is the first one that's happened in over a year, and we like to keep it very limited, and to where it's really necessary for the operation.
Thank you, Drew. Any other questions from the council?
It's short-term.
Yep. Any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for any comments or a motion.
I reluctantly make a motion to approve.
There is a motion.
Do we have to have a reluctant second? I don't know how it works. I'll give you my reluctant second.
There's a reluctant second, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Drew. We're at the point of the meeting for reports and announcements. Any members of the council have reports or announcements?
I'm leaving tomorrow morning for vacation in Hawaii.
Have a very nice time. Any other reports or announcements you want to feel, make us feel bad, or jealous, or anything?
Well, you might be jealous that I was on almost a two-hour tour at the wastewater treatment plant.
Very...
You two can have that opportunity.
I envy your experience, but I have also had that experience, so I... We, we have a lot...
It's a rite of passage, quite frankly. I took my nine-year-old at the time.
Sure, the pleasure was all yours.
We have a lot of things coming up. January is jam-packed with events, starting tomorrow night with reviews for city manager, city attorney. Wednesday night, we've got a fire board meeting, lots of other things coming up. We have an emergency tabletop training. Our interim chief is here. He has promised me, we've been scheming in the absence of the rest of the council members, and there will be other presentations, other exciting things that we will get to do. One of the things that, that our police department has invested in is a special simulator to simulate events, to try to cut down on officer-involved shootings, and to also highlight for members of the public how dangerous it is for police officers to be in situations where people can pull weapons on them very quickly. So we will get to see that and experience that on the same night as the tabletop with Janell Masterson, and maybe get to see and experience some other things as well. So that'll be fun on that night. We have our Blue Sky coming up, which is the last Saturday of January. Rick, because you're going on your vacation, I'm going to be at the PCE Retreat. Many, many things. Any other reports or announcements from anyone else? Then, before we adjourn, I just want to say there are many scary things going on in our world. The fires in Australia, there are places in the world where bombs are dropping, missiles are being fired, there's threats of war. It is a dangerous time, and this morning, I got some very sad news that a very good friend of mine and former colleague, his name is Ken Riken, worked in the Alameda County DA's office for 30 years, and leaves behind his wife and kids. He passed away of a heart attack, and my thoughts go out to him. If we could just have a moment of silence and...
Could I just join that?
Please.
So before Ken worked with you, he worked with me.
Did he really?
Yeah, and we worked in the same department at a very large law firm. His office was right next to mine, and I did not know, but I received word as I was sitting here, and I knew that you knew him as well. So it is with a lot of heavy heart that we'll have this moment of silence.
Just putting out into the world our thoughts, our prayers, for peace and safety for everyone, and a moment of silence for Ken. Thank you all very much, and we are adjourned.